This conference will now be recorded.
This is a call to order for the Planning Commission meeting and zoning appeals. The date is Tuesday on June 13th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Starting the roll call.
Okay, Patrick Blasberg, Lloyd Colston.
Chair.
Brandon Jelling, Ian Coon.
Here.
Kyle Lewis.
Here.
Cody Richardson, Dottie Smith.
Here.
Tom Week.
Here.
So, yeah, that's a court.
So, the declaration at this time, Planning Commission members are asked to make a declaration of any conflict of interest or of any ex parte or outside communication that might influence their ability to hear all sides of any item on the agenda so they might come to a fair decision. This time we'll take public comments, persons who wish to address the Planning Commission regarding items not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Any presentation as for information purposes only, no action will be taken. Public comments?
He's here for that.
Okay. All right, so we move on to consent agenda. So, meeting minutes from April 11th, 2023. Is there any objection to the meeting minutes as ready? Can I get a motion?
Will we approve?
Second. All right, meeting minutes from April 11th have been approved. Now, we will stop the Planning Commission meeting and move on to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Recess the Planning Commission.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, I make a motion that we recess the Planning Commission convene the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Second.
So, let's move on to the first topic of the Board of Zoning Appeals.
This is largely a formality to the chair and vice chair. It's just the way we have it written up. We want to make sure that we're all on the same page.
All right, so at this point, we'll elect the chair and the vice chair. Is this where the Board of Zoning Appeals, is that correct?
Yeah, just the Board.
So, who's the?
So, Tom is the chair and you are the vice chair for 22. So, there's nothing wrong with maintaining that if that's what everybody wants.
Make a motion to accept slate as present.
A second, Pat? Board moves to keep the chair as it is with Tom Weekley as the chair and the vice chair as it is with Ian Coon as the vice chair for 2023.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Okay, we call the Board of Zoning Appeals. And we'll run the first issue. Public hearing to grant the viability of granting a variance to allow construction of a home 1.75 feet below required elevation of 1,071 feet at 1020 West Fifth Avenue. Josh has some background.
Yes. Okay, so this is, this is the house that we're talking about, 1020 West Fifth Avenue. And yes, the house has been built. I would check on the recording how I did that, but it has been built.
So, the house was built prior to regulations?
No, no, and that's part of why we have to have a variance.
When was it built?
We finished the house two months ago.
And the permit was issued knowing that it was below?
No, I don't mean that it was below. I'll get to that.
So, Marcela Jimenez has requested a variance.
Just mentioned. She's the property owner. Caesar is here to speak on her behalf because he was the contractor. The base flood elevation for this area and this whole, the blue shading is the flood plain. The base flood elevation is at 1,070 feet and our ordinance and state statute requires buildings to be constructed one foot above that elevation. What happened there, and Caesar can explain that if we need to, there was an error in the measuring of it and so that meant that the house got built lower than required. It's setting at 10. Actually have an elevation strip that is.
69.
There's 1069.3, so it's about seven tenths of a foot below base flood elevation, which actually means it's 1.7 feet below where it should have been built. So, what? Basically, what they're requesting is a variance to the requirement to put it there. So, the first option here, first of all, I just totally forgot. So, if the, if the variance was approved, then it could remain as is. If it was denied, then the options would be to either elevate the home or it would be to otherwise relocate it, which is obviously not ideal. The homeowner is aware of this. What would happen? Well, I mean, I'm just giving ahead here. So, so this is the property and I don't even read, so the house is right here. That, that's the previous house that was there, so this picture. But it was demolished in 2022 and so this new house was built since then. So, there's a few questions that we need to answer that are specific to flood plain variances. They're different than, than a regular land variance. And so, since we've never really done one of these, I'm going to kind of maybe overkill this a little bit. I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're talking about here. So, will this variance cause danger to life of property? It won't directly, but it is below base flood elevation. So, there's a risk there. Staff has the belief that the base flood elevation is probably higher than it should be there. Typically, the flooding that has happened in that area since the levees were built is very shallow and maybe uncooked. And I'm going to show you a picture in a minute about why we think that's an issue. Are there any dangers in materials being swept onto the adjacent property? This is a house that's tied down to a slab, so there wouldn't be an issue there. Susceptibility of proposed development to flood damage? Yes. If the flood actually got up where the base flood elevation says, then yes, that home itself would be potentially damaged. All the alternate sites available? That's a question we have to ask pretty much for any variance. Not that she owns and this, unfortunately, this entire property is in the flood plain. So, it wouldn't be better to move it to a different part of that. So, this picture shows this little orange mark here, the cross there, well, the cross here basically creates. Yeah, that is where it would have to be elevated to in order to be fully compliant.
But it's anchored to a slab.
Okay. It is anchored to a slab.
It is going slab, three foot pudding. And, I mean, the house, as it sits right now, it's over two foot higher than what the whole house used to be. What happened there was we read the elevation wrong from the surveyors. I asked for a 1070 mark on the property so we can go up a bit. And then I went one foot six from there just to be sure. But that mark they gave me, the surveyor's, wasn't 1070. It was lower, so that's where all the mistake came from. But the house.
Who was the surveyor?
Let's meet to know. But they did put it on the stake thing and I got a picture. I just read it wrong.
Yeah, did you take a picture of that stake?
I did.
Okay.
How did you discover their elevation?
The basic certificate when they handed it to us, that's when we find out. And we would, we would have never guessed because the house, I mean, it sits pretty high.
So, the.
I shot my laser. And the, the whole area is under review right now, so they might take the whole area out of the salt town. Well, I took, I took my laser and I shot my elevation from the finished floor to the house across the street and it's almost to that window. But we, the house sits pretty high, but still not meet the 1070.
I put this picture in here too.
Kyle.
Because the elevation at the mailbox would be right there. If it was elevated, I'd be over that same line. So, this was, this was them using the laser level to show what that was. So, was there any exceptional hardship created if the variance isn't created, isn't granted? The home is currently completed, so I would create a hardship to elevate the structure. Is it in line with the comprehensive plan to grant a variance? Well, generally, granting is pretty common for something like setbacks. So, more unusual for a flood plain. I don't think I even changed the text there, so don't read that. So, unfortunately, what that leaves us with is kind of an odd situation. Technically, issuing a variance is very unusual in this situation, which is why I officially as staff can't recommend that you recommend that you grant a variance because it goes against the flood plain regulations. About the only time that you would ever fully be able to without an issue issue of flood plain variances in a strange situation where there was no other option. One, one case I have saw was where a boathouse was built right on the waterfront. That would have to be one. So, I cannot officially recommend that you grant it. Basically, if you were to grant it, like I sort of mentioned this earlier, you would be, they would be allowed to keep it the way it is. What we would have to do is issue a notice of risk to the homeowner and we'd file that with the registered deeds. If you were to vote against granting a variance, the option basically would be to require them to elevate the structure.
Which is not.
Which is not a great option.
May I say something? I was there when Mr. Caesar and Josh and Mike and myself were all there in this meeting. The understanding was that Josh was going to recommend that we did that. And I don't know why he's backstepping that now because on the website, it says that this entire area is under review for the topography because it was adopted from a nationwide topography, not a citywide or an area of topography in this area, specific to that area. And we had discussed that on that day and.
We're actually waiting on the survey, their surveyors looking into it.
And, and the other thing is the Sixth Street Pond over here, when they built all those housing additions, was in the same area and they've had water issues because they didn't raise it up at all. And we elevated, well, you saw the pictures, we've elevated it up way more.
What's your role in all this? Are you the owner or the builder?
Well, I'm his, I'm, yes, I'm his partner. And so.
So, you're the builder.
I'm with him, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and so we, we just are asking for a one-time variance on that because there is no way of elevating it.
So, do you feel like Smith and Oaks is liable for the mistake?
No, 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 I don't. I think that there were mistakes made on our part, but also this, we, we made, we made the mistake. There was a.
That's contradiction, contradiction in what you said?
Eight, 12, I, I, how is that?
You said that Smith and Oaks take the property.
They did and.
But he said that it wasn't, they're not liable for it.
They're not. I'm not, I'm not saying they're liable. They did put a mark there for me and they did mark it. I just read it wrong.
There was a miscommunication there. We asked them to set it at the elevation at, at, at this elevation here. They set it at this elevation here and there was a miscommunication there. That was the first miscommunication. The second miscommunication is that we built another 12 inches on top of where they set it. And then when we did the foundation, there should have been a certificate of foundation. That's, that is state law and that is city law because the city adopted the state code for that. There was no certificate of foundation granted and we were allowed at that point to build the whole framing and everything and everything else passed certificate. They hooked utilities up and everything else to that degree. So, at this point.
Well, their certificates are based off the information that you provided.
What?
You provided false information to.
No, we didn't, no, we did not. This, what should have happened at the foundation level? What should have happened is Mike should have came out and inspected. The, the city should have came out and inspected the elevation and granted that certificate based on that or said this does not meet our.
I don't think it's the inspector's responsibility to verify the elevation.
It is, in this case, it is because they're, and when you build in flood plain, it is, it is in the city code. It is in the city.
We'll have to look into that.
It is, yeah, it's in the city code. It is written that there should have been a certificate of elevation done before anything else was allowed to happen. And that did not happen at this time, so therefore, we built the whole house. And there's no way to elevate a slab foundation at that point. Well, there is.
Can I ask you a question or two?
There is not.
There's a way to raise a slab elevation. You can put a brick foundation around the outside, it's trusses, it breaks the foundation. An additional cost, but.
Yeah.
There is a way.
And that is unreasonable versus asking.
I don't think it's unreasonable if you're getting out of the flood plain.
Can I?
We don't, we don't know that it's in the flood plain because the topography in this is.
It's under review.
It's under review and that's on the city's website.
Okay, well, if you could prove that it's someone else's fault other than yours.
Oh, it's, yes, oh, it's.
There were, there were three faults of this. There were, there were three people that are, there were three faults of this. There was the surveyor, the, the original Smith and Oaks marked it here and we asked them to mark it here. And then we built off of that and we didn't, we built off of that and, and that's our fault. And then there should have been a certificate of elevation from the city to pass the slab code. And they, that did not happen in the exact order that it should have happened.
So, if nobody caught it, then what, I don't.
That's.
Where, why, how do we get to this point?
That's exactly what I'm saying is that nobody caught it. And there were three people that were involved that we all made mistakes on this.
So, how, how do we find out? Well, level the flood.
Can I ask a question?
Lloyd.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Lloyd.
The question that I have is you have requested FEMA redraw the flood plain maps. Have you gotten a timeline yet on when that decision will be finalized?
I think it's time to do that.
I, the FEMA is working, last I knew, they were working on revising the flood plains for the entire city. The timeline of that is still kind of up in the air.
Yeah, they don't, we don't have a, a date. And I have no idea if that's going to change or not.
Yeah, they may not have for another year or so.
And Josh, your solution, a solution that you've left off the table that I think is viable is that the homeowner, obviously at their expense, would build a dike sufficient to, to prevent water from coming onto the property from outside the property. And a dike would certainly meet the FEMA requirements for flood plain.
You looked at it.
Yeah, she's, she's fine with that, but see, if that house gets flooded, the whole town is in trouble. The house is at at least two foot higher than any other house around it.
The houses that are out of flood plain are in trouble.
The house next door that sets two foot below.
You see all the neighborhood, the house is higher than any house around it.
I understand that, but that doesn't solve this, this particular issue. What would solve this particular issue is a dike around the house. It could even be a, a temporary, I'll use the word temporary, dike that is removable at some point in the future. If the FEMA flood plain maps are revised.
I think the issue that I have is if we, this is a pretty serious variance. If we allow this, then this is going to continue on and continue on. I mean, if I was a homeowner, I would hold the contract to five. Definitely make them fix the correction. That's what I would do, but I recommend that we table this for now till we get more information or till you get your, I, I would find out who's liable first or get your proof that, you know, the mistakes made by the city.
But we, we are, we are liable, we're, we're the ones who built it. I mean, I'm not saying it's not my fault. I'm not saying it's Smith and Oaks fault. There is not their fault. They wouldn't did their job. We read the elevation wrong.
They should have done a, what's called a certificate of foundation and that's in the city code. And that, that didn't get done. I don't understand how, I, I, I just don't understand how we were allowed to build the whole frame on top of that.
Because you build at your own risk. That is why.
Mr. Chairman.
City inspector is not there to.
City inspector is not a surveyor.
Exactly.
But if the homeowner is fine with that and it really doesn't affect anybody. It don't affect the city, it don't affect any of the neighbors.
It does, it affects the property, the value of the house.
Mr. Chairman.
You're risking damaging the house.
Okay, how about the people that live adjacent to that?
That's not part of this. We're, we're, you're diverging from the matter at hand.
No, I'm asking a simple question because I don't understand how that. If you're saying it affects the value of that house, then what about houses that are adjacent to that?
We're not here to discuss that.
It should be affected as well.
Those were probably grandfathered in for this.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Lloyd, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion that we table this issue for 180 days. During that 180-day period, I would encourage the applicant to approach the Federal Emergency Management Agency flood plain people and get a, get the property excluded. That's an action that they can do. And at the end of the 180-day period, we will be able to make a better decision should they be able to reach an agreement with the flood plain issuer, flood plain map issuer. That's our motion table for 180 days.
All right, before I second this, so by allowing this variance, you are making this board and the city liable for damage to the house.
Now, really.
I'm not, I'm not.
As you are.
Excuse me, that motion was not to allow the variance. The motion was to table the request for 180 days. We are not making decisions.
I'm just adding a comment. I, I agree with you, Lloyd. I'll, I'll second Lloyd's motion, okay?
Thank you.
We're going to table a 100-day review to FEMA on this. So, that doesn't resolve our issue. But that, that keeps me from doing anything.
Now, if you could figure out a way to take the liability off this board and the city.
Well, we talked to the homeowner and she's, like I said, she's totally fine. She went to the office with me after.
Don't get mad at it with the homeowner.
Again.
That's the only personal thing. I feel as a builder, you should.
Yep, we did.
Should be held liable for it. You're going to raise your insurance rates, you're going to devalue your property.
Yeah.
If it floods, it's going to destroy the house, so.
The last time we had a flood, you didn't even get to that part.
Yeah, if that, if that, if that, if it does flood, then, then that house isn't the larger issue. There's a large, there's more houses that are larger with that.
We're really discussing that house. I mean, there's a million what ifs, so.
There's a larger issue if that house gets flooded. There's a larger issue in that area.
I agree with you because this specific.
Yeah.
But it's a governing body allowing a variance that's obviously normal facts. We, next week, next month, we have under contract that, 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 that variance. Why have this? We're just going to display it.
Sure, no, I understand that. I understand that completely. I understand that completely. We're just trying to figure out how to fix the situation and coming to you guys to say, this was the next step recommended by Josh. And at the time we met with Josh and Mike, we all agreed that the elevation and the topography in that list was wrong because it's four foot to four and a half foot mailbox that sets this tall of the ground. You're asking us to build 12 inches on top of that and that would set the house so much higher up that it is.
It won't get flooded.
No, sir, that's not what we're saying. That if, 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 that if it did, if that area got flooded, there would be a lot of flood happening in the entire area and a lot of houses would be destroyed. That, that we believe would be a little bit, it's a little on the, what's where I'm looking for. It's a little impractical to build something that, that high up off of the elevation.
And I agree with that.
Thank you, sir.
I agree.
Thank you, Lloyd. Yeah, and we're, so we're trying to find out where the topography really should be because it was an adopted topography from FEMA by the city from just a generalized topography. And that was Josh's statement and Josh's words when we had our meeting.
Did you understand Lloyd's suggestion?
Yes, sir, or ma'am, I guess, I, I, 100% yes.
My second.
I agree with your position. I also agree.
We're all for doing that as well. And we've talked to the state in Topeka. We talked to a nice lady up there that said the same thing. The, that said.
They basically said it really not to worry about it, it's more like an internal issue, a city.
They, yeah.
The city that would be liable.
Yeah.
The city would be liable if we improve it.
Right.
I understand your, your, yeah.
No, I understand your concern. Yeah, you can't just.
It's about.
I'll tell you what, you've got three months to make a case for the locals.
I've got six.
Six months.
I may even say a thank you.
You've got six months. I think that's plenty of time, but, but the last thing I want to do is, is cause problems for the homeowner. I'm sure she's all excited to move into her house.
Well, she's already moved in.
Yeah, to your course.
Yeah, she said, well, she's already moved in utilities. The city's already hooked their utilities and everything up to it. And so, it should have been a problem sooner, it wasn't.
I think trying to get a variance is the easy way.
I would.
Correct way.
Well, it's the easy way out.
This isn't easy.
The only way out. There's no, there's no way of lifting the whole foundation in this lab.
I agree, but you have another option.
And I agree with that.
Yeah, so I agree with building a dike around it.
Excuse me, my proposal of giving you a 180-day extension on this request is so that you can contact FEMA and get the flood plain map done and investigate if that's, if that's not possible, investigate the dike. And if the dike is going to be less expensive than elevating the house.
So, we're good with that. I mean, it's, it sounds very reasonable, 180 days. And like I said, I talked to Smith and Oaks and they're working on getting that new photo of the flood zone. But we might not even on the flood zone more after they get that paperwork back.
I guess my question would be, so if the Smith and Oaks comes back with the elevation and a corrector elevation, we, we, whatever elevation that might be, and it's not approved, then is it the board's recommendation that we just build the dike up around it?
I think that depends on what FEMA says.
That certainly would be, that would certainly be an option for you, but you would want to know if it's cost effective or not because from my chair, I can't make you build a dike, but that certainly is an option that's available to the problem.
It would re-measure it, not accomplish. And like solve problem.
I think our goal was just to, to create a situation where the city is not liable to be liable or have to contradict any of our current, you know, flood implementations and other things that we have. If we start making exceptions and compromising, you know, where does it end?
Stop precipice. Have a difficult.
I totally understand that and that's why.
If something a little minor than this, I consider it's pretty major because of amount of property damage that can be caused by flooding.
Sure.
If something minor, the home was already built, different situation.
No, I, I respect and totally understand and that's why I'm saying too is that, and I understand that they're not surveyors, but there should have been, it is in city code that there should have been a certificate of foundation granted before we were allowed to frame. And they, we could have stopped the building and tore it all off and we would have done that. I mean, you know us well enough to know, we would have done that and done it right. We just. We just, there were mistakes made on a couple of areas.
We never did intention of building the house like that.
We, we certainly didn't do it intentionally, does that make sense?
I think it was, I think it was just a mistake.
Yeah, and that's something else.
Point is, we all make mistakes, but how are we gonna?
How, yes, and that's why we're coming is how do we, how do we work together to fix this situation?
Ultimately, from what the homeowner.
Oh, well, a hundred percent. And, and she's, she's totally happy signing a waiver as well with the city to say, look, we're, she's not concerned with that and she's not, she, she doesn't care.
That's part of the issue is we don't have a way to issue it like that. That's why initially I suggested, um, variance.
Sure.
To go through the process.
A way that doesn't protect the future owner.
Now, did you? Sorry, that's right. Did you find the mistakes yourselves?
Yes.
Well, I, I, I don't for, for coming to the board.
Yeah, we did.
Could have just, you know.
Well, we didn't do anything like that.
We did the right thing, definitely.
Well, I think there was a survey at the very end that we had done. Yeah, that, there was something we had done that, that alerted us to that. And then we went, oh, we messed up and we need to fix this, we just don't know. We called the state and like you said, like Lloyd, there's a dike that could be built around it that they did recommend from Topeka. And she said, if you build this dike, then you.
Yeah.
It would be clear with FEMA. Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Okay, any more discussion on that? What else? If you could still do a voice call on that motion. I appreciate it. Chairman. Make a motion to have a very suspended variance, a hundred and eighty day review for this variance. Going to buy.
I second the motion.
Thank you, board, for giving us the extra time to look into this and to fix that, we, I, we appreciate that.
Josh, you have a voice call.
Just, just a voice call.
Yeah.
You don't have to call it wrong.
Hold, hold your own favor. All right. Lloyd. Okay, that's unanimous.
Yes.
Is there anything else for, um, Board of zoning appeals, Josh? Okay. Make a motion adjourned, always starting the Board of Zoning Appeals, reconvene planning commission.
I second the motion.
Now, adjourned from Board of Zoning Appeals. We are back to our president, planning commission.
Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, considerations, back to planning commissions. I guess we're gonna have another discussion on the amateur radio antennas, support structure.
Just a brief one, just to wrap up what we were talking about last meeting. On that one, I, I'll explain the proposal.
Are we, um, do we have permission, Lloyd?
Sure.
Well, they've, 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 they've come in. Are you there?
I do, too. Thank you very much, and we, we.
And I think there's a reasonable way to fix this.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, I just, yeah, we just don't know what to do there.
Just come down. I would suggest you, uh.
Sorry.
I would suggest you make some comments. If they're liable to put a mistake.
Yeah, they, even if they understand the mistake, like, they're gonna be, I feel like they're pretty reasonable people. You know, they may definitely get in contact for you guys, you know, have suggestions on how to get some movement on this.
So that's why he's helping us with finding out about the zoning. He said, he's the one probably to review it, look, he's. So, I don't have a help, I mean, they're not liable.
They're experts in that field, so.
Well, they set, yeah, they set the mark here and we just, it was a miscommunication, and just.
Little wrong mistakes.
Thanks everybody. I was, I was. Like you, Joe, with.
Yeah.
First of all.
Thank you.
Contact save.
Well, this is, the reason I separated the antenna stuff out is because we have already talked about it. But I also wanted to make this as part of a bigger conversation about subdivision regulations and the zoning, uh, regulations. So tonight, what I wanted to focus on first was we, at our April meeting, we talked about some changes that we could make to the regulations to, uh, I don't know the right word, appease, um, our amateur radio operators, based on that discussion we had. Uh, and so what I did was I took some of the discussion that we had at the, at the April meeting and I put together this draft. And I gave everybody a handout that, um, has the proposed changes summarized, so you don't have to look at the entire article. Um, because it's within a larger article, Article twenty, which is our supplemental regulation, so. I also, in the same package, so don't get too confused, is the rest of the changes that I want to talk about for subdivision regulations tonight. So first of all, we, we talked about, um, limiting the height of the structures and I think, I think we talked about sixty feet. So that would be on the second page where that's discussed. So I did put that in there that it would be sixty feet. Um, there was a few other questions that I had when I was going through it, I think. I'm worried about that one on the first page, I'll put the definitions in there. Um, would we want to have a limit on the number of antennas per property? Maybe one of them. Uh, not antennas, like, gotta be careful how I say that. Antenna support structures on the property. I put in two because that was the, the, the model I was using, just happened to use the language two. Uh, but that would technically mean that you could have two support structures on one property. I mean, now that's a probably a pretty abstract thing to ask you. Lloyd, is that a problem with your club, people wanting more than one antenna? An issue, has it come up at all? Lloyd?
Repeat the question, cause I didn't hear it.
Okay, is it, uh, an issue within the club of, uh, members wanting more than one, uh, aerials or antenna structure or their operation?
Again, the issue isn't the number of antennas, the issue actually is the support structure and.
Yeah, well, it's my issue, cause I want to know how many you can put on a property. Is one or two enough?
Uh, two is enough and one is enough. Um, most of the hands will get by with one, uh, sixty to a hundred foot structure, most of the hands.
Answer my question, thank you. The one, maybe that way.
Shall we go with one?
Yeah, one. That solves.
I mean, otherwise you get into the size of problems.
Yeah. Or one, etc. Yeah, that's the, okay, airport states.
Right.
So in this section on height, I put it at sixty feet, but I also gave a provision in there that suggested that we could approve up to a hundred feet either administratively or with the conditional use permit.
Yeah.
A conditional use permit. I think that's probably the better way to do it.
Okay.
Let's leave it like that, yeah.
And if you're asking my opinion about that, my opinion would be, that would be just great, um, as long as that's a clear we're causing reasonable accommodation and that to me would be reasonable to accommodate up to a hundred feet with the, uh, planner's permission.
Okay, with the planner's position or with the conditional use permit from the planning commission?
That's what you said, Josh, I'm just, I didn't read the, um, it says zoning administrator, she'll have, so that zoning administrator is going to be able to reasonably accommodate a hundred foot tower.
That's what you're saying, okay. And I think that's something that I could do in this situation. Um, what we'd be looking at is can, can a hundred foot tower meet the setbacks? Is the property big enough? Is a hundred foot necessary, can they prove it to me that it needs to be that tall? So that'd be kind of the steps I would look at, if, if it was left up to my decision to do that.
I'm just expecting, if, if this is a residential area, is.
This is designed for residential, that's what these are for.
Maybe, you have a hundred foot tower.
Well, that actually came up, um, I'll just use an example. Um, on my property, back in nineteen ninety, there was a request for a, from the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance to the height of a similar tower. And this was a hand that was wanting to do that. At that time, the, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied it. And the reasoning for that was because, well, what they cited was the neighbors were upset with, with the tower could be, could affect property values or something along those lines. I don't necessarily agree with their decision, but I'm just saying that's what, that's how they decided that case. So, the perception is that it affects property value negatively.
Run me to them was, uh, a lot of thirty, fifty foot towers were able to be rolled up at night when it was good reception, a hundred feet, and then rolled back down, so it wasn't a nuisance, if you will. So there's.
There's some ways to.
Yeah. Keep everyone happy.
So basically, just, I don't think you were hearing that meeting. What, what they were asking for was just a little bit of protection. Um, right now, you'd be limited in a residential district to thirty five feet because that's a height limitation of the district. And so this, by having regulations like this, we're allowing them to exceed that height up to, in this case, sixty feet with reasonable, um, reasonable showing of substantial need for a hundred foot, which would be granted by SASS if we left a language like this.
So sixty foot could become a norm?
Sixty foot would be allowed without any special approval. If, if these like.
That was, that was kind of the national requirement.
That was kind of the floor level that they were.
I feel like we go, major points covered, but just do it case by case, uh, just pull it over.
Okay. That's, that's all that was, they know, it was getting, and that's kind of what Lloyd was asking for originally too. When he first approached me, it was just to have a little, and I call it protection, I think that's kind of what it is. It allows that particular industry, because it's not an industry, but, uh, user group to be able to function reasonably with that along.
Lloyd, do you, do you see any issues with, with the, uh, with the wording on this, or the, the? Of being violated?
No. I, I do not, but I do not see any issues with that point. If you'll go back to point number two, setbacks, um, the, uh, setbacks shall not be permitted in required front yards. Uh, to properly guy a, uh, tower, you would need at least three guy wires and, um, those guy wires would not necessarily all fit in the front yard. It's, I would just say be required in the, on the property, so, uh, I would change that. I just saw that, by the way.
Good to hear, Josh. So, I, I'm not sure I'm totally following, um, what this, what this says. Yeah, what this says is that guy wires, uh, obviously are required. Um, they're just not permitted in front yards unless it can be proved that there's really no alternative. Like it's in a side yard and it just.
But it specifies front yard and you, you can't put three guy wires all in the front yard and keep the tower from falling over.
No, that's what I'm saying, we don't want them in the front yard.
Okay.
Should say front yard, that's, that's subjective. Well, front, should say, the grounding for the guy wires have to be within the property limits. The front yard language. I'll explain it. The front yard is based on setbacks. So it's the front yard setback that's required by the zoning. That's.
And then we're gonna talk about self-supporting towers don't require guy wires anyway.
Right, then it wouldn't be an issue.
Right.
The point, the point that's being made there is that we want the tower to not be in front house, it needs to be inside or it needs to be in backyard.
So, okay.
That's what, that's.
That part seems reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Unless there's some reason why it needs to be in the front yard. It seems like that, that's, that's what specifies the order that doesn't require the guy wires, so. Right, yeah, and if it doesn't require guy wires, then it's an issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, we covered all this, Lloyd, do we need any more discussion?
No. I'm, I'm good, just, just as long as we understand that sixty feet is okay and a hundred feet requires Josh's blessing.
Yep, that's, that's how that works.
So, do you agree? Oh, Jerry, you always discuss this.
This is an angel. So, here's what I'm gonna propose. We, we've done our review and normally at this point, what I would ask you to do as that person is to set a public hearing that moves to the next step. However, is my personal opinion that because we have a whole bunch of other amendments coming up, that we just hold this so that we don't have to have a bunch of public parents?
But, but the, the bulk of it, we kicked it up, but the commissioners, what? Falls in their court and then play it. If you, you just give me a quick rundown on where we're at.
Sure, no, the comprehensive plan is fully adopted.
Okay.
And so what I'm doing is taking that next step, trying to implement the section that talked about needing to change the regulations.
Well, we, I know originally we decided to get it out of our heads. We saw stuff that needed to change. Always make a, it's kind of a fluid document, so.
Yeah, and I still feel the same way, I totally agree with you on the comprehensive plan part.
So.
So this is, this is the regulations.
So next step is, I'm sorry, back to, back to Floyd.
Yeah, I was just suggesting that we don't move that forward, instead what we do is we, we pull it all together as one set.
Okay.
One public hearing, now it's, that's a complicated public hearing and it'll be my job to explain everything that we want to change.
Sure.
My presentation will be lengthy, but it's what it is. Um, I think that's probably the best way to do it. If, if you got to the public hearing and somebody's really upset with, hopefully we, we hash it all out before we get to a public hearing. But let's say we got to a public hearing and there was a whole section of our changes that somebody in the audience was really, really upset about. Well, you could pull that out at that point and still go forward or, uh, you change it. Whatever needed to be done, but the point is what we're trying to do is make this as simple as we can. So we get the regulations changed to match what we want to have without it taking multiple public hearings, which tends to confuse the public even more than having this one public hearing. So, that's my suggestion, and if you're okay with that, what I would suggest we do is go ahead and move to the next item.
Sounds good to me. Anybody else?
All right. Don't necessarily get a motion. Wanted to know what, what your thoughts were.
That's fine.
Well, hopefully, yeah. Okay, so, my proposal is not to cover everything that I'm. Okay, so my proposal is not to cover everything that I'm proposing to change tonight. That would be ridiculous. We know what these things can be.
We love listening to you.
I'm sure you do. So what I'm proposing tonight is just to talk about my subdivision changes, which Jennifer admitted. And then because these, some of these changes are going to affect some of the zoning, I'll just briefly talk about what that means. So let's dig in. So most of the, most of the changes to subdivision regulations are minor. And I'm just gonna simply go article by article. Some articles have absolutely nothing. Some are so minor that you are going to wonder why I'm changing it maybe. So Article one, no changes at all to it. Article two is the, it's mostly talking about the definitions. The only real, one could argue it's not even a substantial change. But the only change that I'm making there really is changing the name of that committee that means from Utility Advisory Committee to Technical Advisory Committee, because that's what we've been calling it for the last three years. And also I think it better reflects what we're doing. The other reason that that's important to me is that the Technical Advisory Committee not only meets to talk about subdivision regulations, they also meet to talk about site plan. They do site hand reviews. So that, that's really all those changes to hang on it. Everything else in there is just little grammar changes in that article. So I'm just gonna speed through. Stop me if you have any questions. Article three wouldn't have any changes to it at all. Article four. This article is concerned about the. I'm sorry to put the titles on there. Oh, I did print that out. Dottie has that. It's, it's the design of the, of the plat, of all the different things that go into a subdivision plat. That's what this article is like. Not the improvements, this is more about the requirements we're doing. Plats are basic requirements. So again, there's some grammatical changes that are in there. That's that first little four dash three zero one. But also there's a few other changes that I want to briefly cover. There's some language in there about what the minimum lot width and minimum lot depth are. And I found that those are confusing because they kind of contradict what's in the zoning regulations. And so the way I changed the wording is that the minimums would be determined by the district that the plat's going to be in. So we're just simplifying the language there, making sure that it's totally aligned to the complex. So that's, that's all that's about. That, one that I totally crossed out about the depth. That's a little strange. I don't even know where that language came from about it being the depth not exceeding a certain thing. Again, we're going to focus on what's in the zoning regulations there. So let's see, what's the next thing? Oh, this is entirely, in this section I was talking about, it's talking about the, if a drain adjustment is done, you have to show the hundred year flood depth on it. And for some reason it said, if known, I would argue that if you're doing a subdivision plat, you need to know what the depths of the flood's going to be. And so I just took that out of there. So now it is just required to be on there. If, if there is a flood plain in a subdivision area that's, that working on a plat, they've got to, they've got to know that direction. The next section is primarily just grammatical too, but there's a whole list of different agencies that are involved. Again, this is about flooding. And some of the agency names are wrong and some of them are abbreviated and others weren't. So I just corrected that for consistency just to make sure that we're talking about the right people. These are the agencies, for example, that Mr. Reyes is going to have to work to get his issue resolved. It's the same group. Let's see, so Article five is an article that talks about reservation of public land. The way we wrote that article is it's kind of a permissive, if you will. When we do a subdivision plat, we don't necessarily require them to do this article, but if they're going to do it, they need to do it this way. And really the only change that's there is there is a reference to the countryside district, which we're going to, we'll get to that when we talk about that. We're going to eliminate that district and so there doesn't make any sense to have a reference to that if we're going to give it a district. So that's really the only thing that changes there. Um, let's see, Article six talks about the requirements when you're submitting a plat. The main thing I did there is we've done a few plat reviews, this group has, and as, as you know, we don't typically need a whole bunch of plats sitting around on tables. It's, it's just, in fact, this was actually a bigger deal when we used to meet at City Hall, because there's no room to lay them out. Here we can lay them out, of course, but the requirement to have that many copies was a little absurd. And so I lowered it down to something a little more reasonable, to three. And then in fact, it's even a little less on the final plat. There's also a change from utility advisory to technical advisory. Oh, yeah, I did, I reduced final plat from five, including the Mylar, down to two. So that's another thing. We want to have, when we're in a meeting, you probably don't want to look at the Mylar because it, well, it tends to rub the ink on your face. And so we still want some copies for you guys at a meeting, so that's why it's two, but not five, five is excessive. That all it really does is it drags the cost up for the developer, doesn't really serve a purpose. The only other thing in that section, there's some, there's a whole listing of all the different things that are required to be on a plat. And some of them weren't right or they're missing information. So this just helps to correct what you have to see on a plat. Some of those requirements come from the state. Some of those I've just found from experience with recording plots with the, with the Cal County Register deeds. They need to see certain things on a plat. This section just tells the developer, the surveyor, whatever the case may be, what they need that on there. And I have always worked with, Smith and Oaks does a lot of ours, for example. They know what needs to be on that plat. All I do is review it to make sure everything. A whole bunch of you have seen them and I'm sure, I don't know, Ian, have you had to sign any plats?
Oh, it's a clear deal with it.
You will. You will at some point. But there's all these signature blocks, all sorts of different people have to sign off on it. It's, it's just a formality, but it shows all the different approvals that have to happen. So we, the planning commission does one, obviously the surveyor and the owners certify as to what they give us correct. The city commission has to sign off. And the treasurer has to sign off that says the taxes are up to date. So there's all sorts of different things that they have to do. And so that's just, we're just correcting everything to make sure it's totally accurate. So Article seven talks about the improvements that are required. So it has specifications on sidewalks and streetwicks and all those sorts of things. There's not a whole lot of changes to these sections. I chain modified that table because it's, it's just extra information that needs to be on there. Also remove references to Public Works Department because we don't call it that anymore. And just refer to it city engineer. City engineer is a generic term that's defined in the regulations. Like in our case, we don't have a city engineer, but Smith and Oaks is our acting city engineer. But it says that in the definition, so just simplifying that so it's not referring to something that doesn't exist. And then there's another section where the zoning administrator can approve certain changes rather than the public works department. Now, that doesn't mean that I won't talk to the public services department, that's what we call it today. But it just makes it simpler for the platformer to understand. So as you can see, so far there's nothing really of that substantial in the, in the regulations. So Article eight. Oh, I can't remember what this part is about. But this is also some references, has some terms that need to change. Is there anything besides grammatical in that one? Oh, yeah, a change from utility advisory to technical advisory. So nothing of any substantial. Articles nine and ten, not touching those. Article eleven, the comprehen, this is the first comprehensive plan thing. There was a paragraph in there about lot splits. The problem that I found with lot splits and, and the way we have it worded in there now is that I review them, doesn't have to come before this board. But there's a lot of issues with getting lot splits to go through the process. So many times I will find out there's been a lot split after it's already occurred. And so that's forced me to change what I do, like an attorney or a surveyor just simply applies it. The register of deeds doesn't check that kind of thing.
They don't check compliance with this?
They just record the document as percentage of them. So, and I, I kind of thought that, but that's, that's what registrar of deeds told me. That's, that's all they do, they don't check compliance or anything. And so that doesn't mean I'm not going to check it, but what I've done in the meantime is.
What if their, what if their registered conflicts are so related?
The only, what I would have to do in that case would be to send out a letter of violation.
It seems kind of like you put the cart before the horse.
It does, but when it happens without my knowledge, there's not a lot I can do. That's, that's all I'm saying. So what I was doing was originally was charging a fee. Because what I was doing, of course, was reviewing it, but I would send this certificate. And I would record it with the registry deeds. So what I started doing instead was I waved the fee because I mean, I want to encourage people to actually look through the proper channel. And I'm not going to file that for them, but also apply it for them, if they keep it for whatever reason. And so all I really did in this section was I eliminated the requirement that I file a certified copy. That's, that's it. And then there was another, oh, there's, that's another copy thing. The way I do it, I don't need copies of survey because I'm the only one reviewing it anyway. So I just, I just, I just need the survey.
Is there a minimum or what is the minimum size of a lot to be split?
That is in the zoning regulations. So we've actually had to do a couple of variances over the past couple of years for somebody that wanted to do a lot split for a lot that was too small. And so the Board of Zoning Pros would then have to approve that variance in order for me to approve the lot split. So we've done.
We had one variance in our.
Yeah. We had, in fact, I think that was the last time we had a Board of Zoning Pros meet, this was the case like that.
Two houses.
Does that answer?
No.
I didn't take it this. The way you're looking at me.
You're already to ask again, that'll help.
Go ahead.
What is the minimum lot size?
Oh, that's what you're asking. Yeah, for, for residential districts, it depends on the zoning, but I think for the the R1 district, it's six thousand square feet. And then for the.
Six thousand square foot lot can be split?
No, that's the minimum lot size. So if you're going to split a lot and it's going to result in something that's less than, that's six thousand square feet, then you would have to get a variance or it would not be approved.
Wasn't the one that came up for variance approved?
Yeah, it was, because they had seven buildings, there was two houses, and the original, the original house, originally it was two lots and somebody had combined them and brought it back to subdivision condition, basically.
Where is that?
I think it was down.
Jefferson? It's like first and Jefferson, I think.
I know the property.
I thought it was, yeah, okay, yeah, it's down here by the base point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions about lot splits? Okay, we actually, I will add this. Several years ago, we actually made an amendment to the lot splits because of a weird thing to, I think that might have been for most of you or on the commission honestly. But there's been a few other little minor changes to it. Um, let's see, so Article twelve is just a reference, changing it from the Director of Public Works to the Technical Advisory Committee. They actually review, oh, this is about vacations. So when I do this for a public hearing, I'm going to have these on here so I remember what they are, what each article is. But this, this article is about vacations. And so what do they, what we do there is I consult that committee, which is primarily utility companies in this case. And I'm asking, hey, do you see any problems with us vacating this property? And assuming they say no, that's when I bring it to the public hearing. And we, of course, just did one of these, the vacation down, that was always in subdivision. The vacation of part of Taylor Avenue. We did that.
That was the last.
I think that was in April.
Yeah.
We did that. And I had consulted with that committee and they said, there's nothing in that, so we're fine with you.
Didn't they come up with a counter? What would be?
Not that one. There's one in that area. It's on that list. It's not that one. And finally, Article thirteen. Now this is a big change. And that's because I'm getting rid of it. That was one of the things also that ended up in the comprehensive plan. When we were first doing these regulations, we bounced back and forth whether site plan review should be part of subdivision regulations or it should be zoning regulations. Well, we landed, staff landed on, it would go be okay to be in subdivision regulations. Well, in practice, that doesn't work very well. I've found that if I had it in the zoning regulations, then people that were trying to develop a site would be more likely to see it. And so that's why I proposed to you when we did the comp plan to move these regulations to the zoning regulations. So as part of that discussion, when we first did that, and I say we, I'm talking about staff. This happened with, between our consultant at the time and staff. We had Article twenty-nine in the zoning regulations that was just reserved for future use. And so I just proposed to put it right there. But part of removing that, when I reviewed that, it wasn't simply, you just moved that whole article to Article twenty-nine and you're done. There's a couple of things in there that I found really needed to be in other articles. So some of that information was in Article nine, which is the commercial districts, and what that was is some development standards. And then there was a whole section in the site plan review regarding those mini storage warehouse things. And those all, those have their own sections now that's in the commercial district, in the industrial district. So again, when somebody's deciding that they want to put in one of those kind of units and they're reviewing the regulations for the ever calling, because people actually do that, believe it or not, then they will. then they will already see, okay, this is what the cities are gonna require if we put in, if we wanna put in these storage units. So it's all in there, one stop, before they would have had to look at the subdivision regulations and say, no. So this fixes that problem too.
There is something that I would like to see, maybe it's already addressed, I'm curious a little more, is like the multifamily dwellings, you know, the block to the north, single family area. Kind of like, see, it's subject to one, certain areas. And just because it kind of causes problems for the surrounding homeowners. I've heard several people complaining about that. About the traffic and the railing and all the property ties and things like that.
Well, and that, I wasn't prepared to go into that tonight too much. But we will be talking about the residential regulations. That's, I have actually went through all thirty articles of these zoning regulations.
Like what sort of did I?
No, it was not. Trust me, I'm not gonna do that. You should try for that. And I have created a document that's very similar to these that I've given you tonight. And what, again, what I propose is that I will bring that document to you the next time we have a meeting, which I presume will be July. And what I will do is we'll go until you get sick of listening to me. And we can split that up over multiple, I don't care how many. And then the idea would be sometime late in summer or maybe that'll make it into the fall.
What makes you think we're sick of listening to you?
Get sick of listening to you.
No.
Yeah.
Totally. It's not you, it's just.
It's Trump. What can I say? And I thought that I had.
Do you need my coffee?
I thought I had printed off what those changes were.
For what?
For the zoning regulations. But I'm not gonna worry too much about it because you're okay with us combining all this. So what I'm gonna do is the stuff that I've talked about tonight, moving into the zoning regulations, it'll just be in that document. And so when we get to that section, I'll remind you, hey, we talked about this at the June meeting. This is what that was. And we won't spend thirty seconds on it. But other than that, that's really all that I wanted to talk about tonight was just to let you know what was gonna be done in the subdivision regulations, which isn't much. But we've discussed it and so we won't have to do with that again at the next meeting. The same thing with that antenna structure thing. We'll put that in that document. And when we get to that section of the regulations, I'll say, oh, remember, we already talked about this. Don't remember that. But here's what all those changes were and this is where they'll fit into the regulations.
Once we get all the amendments, then we'll present it to the public.
Yeah, and then that's, we'll have, we'll schedule a public hearing at that point and I'll basically go through the whole presentation. I will find a way to condense it as much as I can. Like for instance, if it's just grammatical stuff, I'll just skip right over it.
You have a timeframe when you're thinking.
About how to have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Sometime in the fall.
Okay.
Summer maybe?
If it has to be December, yes, we'll do it.
Be gone.
You'll be gone. Okay, we'll do it in November.
If summer's good, I'll be at the beach on one of Hawaii.
You know what we need to do is we need to have our planning commission be relocated to the beach that Dottie's going to.
I'll go right on the beach. You're all welcome to come.
I don't know how in the world we're gonna get the public to the beach. I don't think any of you would object to going to the beach.
We could put a back to cover this room.
City, what do you want? Yeah, you can try that. I won't be presenting or asking for that.
Say we're doing research.
You're gonna buy?
Research.
It's for, in the name of research.
Oh, oh, go on to the beach, okay.
Well, yeah, you gotta see what's all there.
Go to Hawaii and do research.
Sure.
Sounds good to me.
How motion we adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
You adjourn. Thanks, Mo. Are you still there?
One thing, the meeting's over, but I did wanna say this. When a motion is made, seconded, it needs to be invoked.
Okay.
It can be just a voice, it can be all in favor of the eye, you know, that type of thing. Sometimes it's roll call vote and Josh will tell you that, but motion's gonna carry for a little bit.
Yeah, we'll do roll calls when it, like if we were to voting, actually voting on that variance, we would have done it.
That is just a, once a guy.
Oh, that's in the Robert rules.
Actually, it's in almost all meetings.
That's, that's all, totally Robert rules. Okay.